I'll call the May 28, 2019 regular meeting of Peters Township Council to order. Before we begin tonight, as yesterday was Memorial Day, I ask that we all observe a moment of silence in honor of those brave men and women who gave their lives in the protection and creation of our freedoms. Thank you. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Merrill?
Present.
Mr. Steigel?
Here.
Mr. Arcuri?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Berquist?
Here.
Mr. Ball?
President.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 13, 2019. Ms. Merrill, I believe you have some changes to those minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had sent Mr. Lauer a note that I wanted a statement added on the miscellaneous item related to the ambulance, just to say that I agreed that performance is important but feel that the financials are equally important. So.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes with that provision I added. Sergeant? Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval of the transcript of the public hearing regarding proposed changes to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision and development ordinance held on April 22, 2019.
Is this being approved?
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval of the transcript of the public hearing for the proposed Rolling Hills Park Community Outdoor Aquatic Center held on April 29, 2019. Sub move. Sergeant? Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I had sent Mr. Lauer a few points to question, along with a couple of spelling things, and just wondered if he had time to take a look at them.
I believe your corrections are appropriate.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion in subject to the corrections. Sergeant? Assuming we can do that. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is special reports, park and recreation board update.
Vince Reppepi from Parks and Rec Board, given the highlights from November 19 through April of 2019, the DCNR project went from waiting on designs to Jeffrey Associates doing the work, but still waiting finals for site work. Sports associations were basically business as usual with some poor documentation and such, but again, as usual, they were contacted and everything by each team was straightened out within the standard timeframe. The youth protection policy was discussed at length multiple times, with background checks staying at three years as opposed to the five-year state recommendations. A new Parks and Rec program, the Dare Model Railroad Club, was introduced, and the Mission Possible 5K Run again was okayed for Arrowhead Trail. Staying with the trail, there was work on more ideas for the memorial program since most of the spots for the memorial benches have been taken, and these are currently under discussion. Still with the trail, Eagle Scout Jackson Bazare started and then gave his final project, which was a third-mile trail and access steps at Peters Lake Park. The Rolling Hills Project, the roadway and infrastructure design recommendations, as well as the Great Lawn Dog Park, Trail Connections and Aquatic Center as part of the first phase were all highlights of this discussion. And lastly, reorganization took place with Pat Earhart elected as chairman and Jeff Crumey as vice chairman of the board, and I took over as the yes representative.
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
And I don't mean to be rude, but my nephew's pitching in the Whipple finals after a while thing, so I'm gonna go. Started at 7:30. Thank you.
Next item is audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting where any member of the audience is attending for up to five minutes on the agenda. Item, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Boardman, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Carol Lee Cattalar. I live at 103 Bethany Drive. If you remember, I was here two weeks ago at the council meeting on May 13 and spoke in favor of the formation of a task force to investigate a nondiscrimination ordinance for Peters Township. I followed up my remarks with an email to Mr. Cozer, asking if we could continue with this discussion. He responded to me with several questions and invited me to return tonight to address those questions, so that's what I'm doing here tonight. His first question was regarding the composition of the committee or the task force, I think we can use the terms interchangeably, the number of community members and number of council members that would be involved. I would see five permanent members on the task force, two council members and two from the community. A fifth person could be an impartial chairperson from outside of either group who can efficiently move the process through from start to finish and make sure that the needs and the concerns of both groups are being considered. Mr. Cozer's second question was how the community members would be selected. Ideally, I think the community members of the task force would come from the LGBTQ community currently living in Peters Township, because obviously, these are the people that have the most invested in this issue. I suggest that the subgroup actually be able to choose the two people that they would like to see on the task force. These two people could then submit a letter of interest to council describing their interest in the matter and their qualifications to serve, and then council would approve these community members unless they had serious reservations about the ability of the person to perform the duties. Mr. Cozer's third question was regarding the length of time that the committee would be in existence. I think six months is a reasonable period of time with one meeting per month, with the option of one or two additional meetings with outside groups to address specific issues such as enforcement. And then, Mr. Cozer's last question was whether or not the members of the task force would have any tasks outside of making a recommendation to council. At this time, I would say probably not. I think when the task force has completed its research and has prepared a report with recommendations to council, that then their work would be done. But obviously, this would depend on the scope and the objectives of the task force once that was decided upon. Can I answer any questions that you may have or any clarifications on my responses?
One question I do have, and I don't know whether you'll be able to answer this, Mr. Lauer, maybe more qualified, a note, Ms. Cantrell has sent different ordinances to us. One was the Mount Lebanon ordinance, another one was the Ross Township ordinance. And do we know, have these municipalities ever attempted to enforce these ordinances?
At this point, I don't know the answer to that question, and I think obviously, that would be something that the task force would look into.
Mr. Lauer, do you know?
I do not believe so, because in the case of Ross, I don't think that they've informed the commission. In the case of Mount Lebanon, they're still trying to form that commission. So I don't think either of them are in a position yet to have heard any cases.
I mean, the issue, the real issue here is, certainly there's no one on this council that holds any prejudice or anything of that nature, but I think I, I'm not gonna try to speak to this entire council, but I, certainly from my perspective, the last thing we would want to do is enact an ordinance that we can't enforce. We don't want, you know, members of this community, whether it be because of their sexual orientation, their religion, or their natural heritage, to feel that they're being discriminated against and think that they have protections that they actually don't. And I think that's the biggest concern. I did some research on this after Ms. Cantrell came to the last meeting, and I cannot find any examples where these local ordinances have actually been enforced. But I guess that doesn't mean that they can't be enforced, it just means that no one has gone through the process of actually enforcing them. So I think that would be the first thing we would have to address, and maybe that's something our solicitor can look into, because I think that the end result of the research that we have is that we can enact any ordinance that we want. I think there's no question about that. We can enact an ordinance tomorrow that says that recreational marijuana use is legal in Peters Township, but we all know that's not gonna be enforceable, because that's something that's enforced by the state and the federal government, ultimately the federal government. So ultimately, at some point, it's Supreme Court, and the United States is gonna rule on whether or not sexual orientation is protected by the anti-discrimination statutes that are out there now. At this point, we don't know the answer to that question.
Hopefully, we'll know shortly. There's a case pending in the Supreme Court of the United States that was, CIRC was granted on April 22, 2019, and that, they're gonna determine whether the word sex in Title VII is prohibitive discrimination, means gender identity including transgender status, Congress enacted Title VII in 1964. So it came out of the Sixth Circuit decision, which said that it did encompass that. So if they granted cert in April, they won't hear it till after October, because that's when the term starts. So I'm sure it's being briefed. If the Supreme Court would say that sex in that context of that statute encompasses all of the issues that you're concerned about and that we're sort of concerned about, then this is pretty much an exercise of futility, because that's gonna then be along Land, the EEOC, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, instead of having a guiding policy who actually also have jurisdiction. So I have no problem. I don't think anybody should discriminate against anybody for any reason whatsoever, but you know, it seems to me, my gut reaction when my first, when this issue was first brought up, was that this is something that's better off maybe handled at the state or federal level, and it looks like we're getting there, at least depending on what the Supreme Court says. And I read the lower court decision, and it was kinda lengthy, but it was very well reasoned, and so I think we might be putting the cart before the horse here, but.
And what was the timeframe that you thought that this might?
Well, they granted cert in April, April 22, 2019. It's limited to the issue of whether Title VII prohibits discrimination against transgender people based on their status as transgender or sex stereotyping under some Supreme Court decision, Press Waterhouse versus Hawkins. Sixth Circuit said that it included it, and it is prohibited, so.
But it addressed only transgender individuals?
I think the underlying decision adjusts, like every conceivable form that you could think of, which basically was what's in the Human Relations, Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission's definitions of, you know, they have gender expression, gender identity, gender trans, I mean, all of that was in there. So I'm assuming that if they rule, if the Supreme Court confirms that, then the state and the federal government are enforcing it through either the EEOC, the state are enforcing the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission.
And I agree with you, if it could be done at the national level or the state level, that would be wonderful.
Well, we feel we're not, because the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission is picking back the EEOC. If you go file, I used to do this, this practice is kind of long years ago, if you go file an EEOC complaint for whatever, let's say race discrimination, or what would be age, because that would come under the ADEA, you know, sex or some kind of form of prohibitive discrimination, then they automatically cross file with the council. It's automatic, it just happens. I've never really actually seen in the years I did this work, which was a while ago, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, they were doing anything, they just sort of take the complaint, sit on it, because they let the EEOC run its course, which can take 90 days or whatever, and then you go to court, you lose, but you know. I think Mr. Cozer was right, there's a lot of issues irrespective of this, that, you know, one of the concerns I had, and I think I may have mentioned it to Mr. Cozer, was just the ability to like enforce anything that we would do anyway. I don't know how we could enforce.
I thought Mr. Smith has already given us his legal opinion when this first came before us, and I just turned 65, so my memory's not so good, but could you just give us a synopsis again of what your original?
Yeah, there were a number of reasons that I believe that the council should not adopt this ordinance, from a legal standpoint, not from a factor of whether it was good, bad, or indifferent, just legally that you couldn't do it. One of the, the guiding principle was this guidance document from the PHRC, and I think it was the next day that the Supreme Court announced, soon thereafter that meeting, that the Supreme Court announced it, granted cert, which normally in the term will by this time next year.
So our decision had a lot of impact on?
Yeah, someone picked it up. But nonetheless, there's also issues in there about the Home Rule Charter, whether we can put different burdens on our employers, because we are a home-ruled community as well. And also, one thing I didn't discuss in the opinion, which is more along the lines of this, is typically the way to federal court is through the EEOC process. We can't substitute to be that process. What happens if we put a commission together and we vote that there is no discrimination? Does that have some preclusive effect for you going the EEOC route and getting the federal court to file a complaint? That is a big issue, because that is the gateway into the court system, normally get a write-to-sue letter or something along those lines. There's no way that a local board has the ability to give you that and to exhaust that administrative process before you get to court. So we could end up hurting any potential claim, because there'd be some adverse ruling with no mechanism in place to even appeal it through the court system, like we have through the EEOC process. And I've only done handfuls of employment discrimination matters, but that's the same with you, Mr. Arcuri, that's my recollection of, you go there first and then you end up in federal court or what have you.
So, you know, we've kind of covered this, and we went with the opinion of our solicitor then. And what I don't want to have is just to have an ordinance, just to have an ordinance that's not enforceable, that's not adding teeth to it. It's, I don't wanna say it's a waste of time, but it just seems unnecessary at this juncture.
And as of now too, ma'am, the, with the Pennsylvania, or the US Supreme Court having this issue before it, and I understand, I think you brought up, what if the guidance document changes, right, that's not a law? But seemingly, within a year, we're gonna find out whether that's going to be a law, that they're gonna have to follow it through the court's interpretation, or the court's gonna say no, they can't enforce it, which will then come down to all of us, and we can't create our own protected classes, and be, I don't think so, be contrary to the state and federal government.
I don't think anyone on this council, and I can guarantee you I'm not, someone once said my family Christmas card looks like a Bernie Sanders relic, and so I'm not at all against it, I'm just saying I'm not going to go with a program that our solicitor doesn't believe is necessary.
I think that, given the propensity of this case, that, I don't think we should completely foreclose what you're asking for, because, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen with this case, but I can tell you, we'll probably know something, probably in less than, by the end of the year, hopefully, and if they affirm it, then we don't need to do really anything, because it's gonna be handled.
In the interim, the state is enforcing, they're reading it the way the Sixth Circuit reads it, so.
They are, but you know, if you look at their website, it's guidance, but they'll take complaints.
Right.
And things of that nature. I mean, I criticize that stuff out, but I think the best, the better way to do it is just wait and see what happens, and then if for some reason they say it doesn't include that, then I think, you know, I don't see what the problem would be if we did have some sort of task force and look at it.
Well, there are other illegal impediments, in my opinion, relative to the Home Rule Charter.
Well, I mean, I read that way back.
Yeah, months ago, yeah.
It's been a while, so, you know, that might be the case, but I don't think that we should foreclose anything. I mean, if there's something that we could do, or at least explore, I don't see why not, but I don't think we should do it right now, unfortunately. I'm not trying to court you, I'm not trying to do anything illicit, so, you know, I just think we should just wait until this case is decided and just, I know somebody from the papers here, it's RG and GR Harris Funeral Homes versus EEOC, the decision below, it's 884 Fed III, 560, and they granted cert, and I think it's pending, but they have a number for it here. I don't have a number for the cert grant, but it's online, if you just type in 884F3D560, that case will come up. If you go on the Supreme Court United States website, just type in transgender, or put up a list of the current cases, my reflection is always like the first or second case. So, I mean, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think too, we should leave it open. I don't think that we should just automatically say that, no, we're not going to do this and close it out. I think that we should.
And I don't wanna waste everybody's time on the task force if eight months from now, seven months from now, we get a decision based on the law, and it's sort of loose laws.
And I think I would suggest in the interim, if you have any of these other municipalities that have taken up enforcement, and it's gone through some process where it's reached the court, you know, bring it to our attention, and we can see what the court, how they're weighing in on this, from the local level up. I think that's what Mr. Cozer, Mr. Lauer said, we've reached out to some municipalities, and they haven't even got their commissions together, let alone processed any claims.
Okay, thank you. I think that's legitimate, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak on another agenda?
Two people. You just got something. Good evening, counsel. I just wanted to briefly discuss.
Mr. Books, if you have to.
I'm sorry, Ron Books, 855 Bebott Road, Venetia. I just briefly wanted to discuss circumstances surrounding the swimming pool. How many of you are aware of what happened in Monroeville or what's about to happen in Monroeville?
I saw it on the news last night.
Yes. Their last pool, the last one of three, will be closing at the end of summer, because the Turnpike Commission is putting in an extension or a widening. Interestingly enough, the township or Monroeville seemingly does not have any concept of a replacement, so it looks as though they won't replace the pools. Now, that begins to garner the question, why won't they replace the pools? Maybe because there isn't overwhelming particip, or need to participation, participate in a swim program. Maybe the, maybe the folks in the municipality decide they don't need it. What concerns me is, how long have we been at this, since the original Park and Recreation Survey was done, what, five years ago?
About 30.
Pardon me?
About 30.
30 years ago?
20, 23?
33.
This one?
But this question's been asked many times. You know, Mr. Books, I've been here since 1984, and I can tell you shortly after I was hired, this question was asked.
Okay.
And every time the question is asked, that we do a survey of the community to ask, what is the recreation facility they would most like, like to see, the one that always is on top of that list is the swimming pool.
Okay, I can understand why that's probable, but when I look at this, I see that not everyone, particularly in this township, is endorsing the idea of a pool. And we're about to spend $32,000 on another study? What's that study for?
That study's a market study to determine what, what would be the nature of the revenue that could be generated if in fact the community pool exists. So in other words, it would make, it would help make the determination as whether or not the, the operating revenues from the pool would actually cover the cost of operating the pool as well as, as ongoing maintenance.
Just the cost of operating the pool, not the cost of building the pool?
I'd be clear on that, and it's true, Mr. Books, of every recreational facility we have ever built, there is no recreation facility that ever pays for its capital cost, and this wouldn't be any different.
So it's a, it's a cash loser, really. For some reason, I'd like to see the issue put on the, in the form of a referendum this fall's election.
We can't do that, sir, because the Home Rule Charter.
You can change the Home Rule Charter. You can change it. You can do it. I have faith in you.
Counsel cannot change the Home Rule Charter.
Who can?
It would, that would take a referendum to be able to do that.
A referendum?
Yes.
Okay.
But even that, I mean, I don't make decisions based on, you know, 65% of the people want X and 35% of the people don't.
Well, not like that, 65, 35%, and 12% show.
Right, so I mean, I, you know, I make decisions based on realities and what I think's best for everyone.
Well, the question is, how practical, how practical is this pool? I don't see a lot of other communities jumping into this.
Well, that's what we're trying to find out, that's why we're authorized. I mean, you're never gonna, the only way you recoup any of your capital costs is if the state gives you a grant for half of it, right? Well, I mean, if.
That's, yeah, you share, you share the capital cost with someone else.
I mean, you're gonna spend, listen, even if you didn't spend the 10, the $11 million or whatever the number is to the pool, and you spent it on tennis courts and pickleball courts and whatever, right? You're not gonna recoup that money, it's just not gonna happen.
All right. I understand that.
I mean, you're gonna have maintenance on the road, maybe not as much maintenance as you would in an aquatics facility, but you're still gonna have those costs.
I understand that, but my question really is based upon the practicality of a pool. Who will use it? Again, I would refer to Bel Air Park in Monroeville, as far as its usefulness. One other thing I will add, just briefly, since some of my time was used in response. There was a recent editorial in the Wall Street Journal. Mr. Lewis, do you get the Journal?
I do.
Did you happen to see the editorial in there, based upon what was happening in some of the communities which have adapt, adopted the transgender philosophy?
I don't recall.
Okay. It was interesting, because you know who was most opposed to it after it was implemented? Women. Why? Because they suddenly found out that the boys who claimed to be transgender were going to be playing their position in baseball, softball, football, all the other sports. The other thing is, the girls bathrooms and dressing rooms suddenly got invaded. I was just thinking, I was watching the news tonight, I guess they're gonna indict the guy from the Goldfish Swim Club. There's his defense, his affirmative defense. Bingo, I'm transgender, I just wandered in there. But that, it's kind of a tongue-in-cheek kind of thing. But just a comment, that apparently in some communities that have adopted it, they're having second thoughts.
There's no question, and I'm aware of that.
Pardon me?
There's no question, I'm aware of that fact, whether I picked it up from the Wall Street Journal or not, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Books.
Have a good one.
It started back with the Olympics.
Anyone else?
Hi, Jolie Cantrell, 446 East McMurray Road. So I had a couple things I wanted to ask. Last week, I, or last meeting, I had asked for the solicitor's report to be public, so I'm making a formal request for that. I'm not sure, like, when I ask for something in this part of the meeting, I guess it's not a formal request, so I'm not sure how I should do that, but I'd like that to be public. My question about that is because last week, or the last meeting when we actually suggested having the task force, and it was around eight minutes in, then the email I received from you today said it had never been requested, so I'm not sure on how that request has to be done. But I also am in favor of the task force, and I think now we have that as officially, we'd like to propose that. But so then I want the solicitor's report. The other thing was for, Ms. Merrill, when we talked about the Peters Township employment, that blurb, and you had said, you know, that the wording means, where it says sex means gender orientation and sexual orientation, gender expression, but you said something like it's, it changes over time, and that's exactly the point. It does change, so we'd like it to say that. We'd like the, what is it? Anyways, the employment nondiscrimination section, we'd like it to say gender orientation or expression and sexual orientation, or gender identity, sorry. And then I was also concerned, I had sent several emails and I hadn't received a response, so I think, I think I got that cleared up, but if I sent, if I wanted something recorded and I wanna send it in the correspondence part, do I have to do that by mail or is an email okay?
Either email or.
Okay, and I just have to tell you that I want that in there?
Yeah. You send it to me, that's the best way to do it.
Okay, awesome. The other thing I, about not being able to enforce the ordinance, many states have it. Fifty-five townships, cities, boroughs in Pennsylvania have it. So I'd be surprised if all of them approved it if it couldn't be enforced, but I will gladly check with Mount Lebanon and Ross to see how they've enforced it, if they have. I think kind of the point is, if, if we're all doing what we say we're doing, we wouldn't actually have to do much to enforce it because that doesn't happen. The city of Pittsburgh has had theirs since the nineties, so if anyone's had to do anything with it, I'm sure it would have been them. So I'll find that out, too. I was curious, Mr. Lewis, you had just said that you knew people that had second thoughts on the, on their nondiscrimination ordinance. Do you by chance know any of the places, like?
Well, I made reference in acknowledging what Mr. Books had talked about, that it's been an issue all the way back into the Olympics.
Okay, so with, you're talking with athletes, not with townships enforcing, okay.
Last time I knew, those athletes were supposed to be payable.
Yeah, I think we're talking about something else, though. So that's what I have. I don't know if you had any questions on what I said. I know I try, almost cut someone off.
Now, I think you did send me an email on, I was actually looking back, I've been, I don't know if they came...
It actually came back from yours, so...
No.
Yeah, I sent it again.
Because I figured out how to get in there and start deleting.
Yeah.
I didn't realize I had about eight thousand of them. It took me long, because I think you gotta do it one at a time.
Yeah.
I'm not sure sixty-five...
You don't have to do it.
Oh, you can do it alone? Oh, I'm gonna call you then. Yeah. I apologize for your...
That's okay. It wasn't the only email that I sent.
I did.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? How are you, Ms. Chaney?
I have a broken wrist, but other than that, I'm doing good. Okay. Anne Chaney, 123 Robin Hood Lane. I have three things. Number one, I'm still getting calls, okay? So I just wanna report that to you, that they're still asking, because I'm neutral about the pool, but a lot of people are saying they want, they feel it should be year-round, so that's indoor, and also there are a lot of people, I got this at the polls, okay, work in the poll, Republicans and Democrats coming up to me, I mean, maybe they're seeing me on TV or something, I don't know, because they know you're the pool lady. So, anyway, people are saying they don't think all that frill is necessary, they just want a regular pool. They say, why can't we have a regular pool? So that's a big thing going on out there. And as far as the referendum, I would like to ask a question. Is there any reason why people, because PTMSA, whenever we did the Marcella Shell petition, we got 2,500 signatures and we did get that on the ballot, could we do a referendum to change the Home Rule Charter to addressing capital expenditures?
I think Mr. Lowers said that we could.
Yeah, there's a process by which the Home Rule Charter can be amended, yes.
Through referendum?
Yes, I'd have to go back and look at it, it's, you know, the Home Rule Charter, since I've been here, has only been amended once, so I'd have to go back and re-educate myself as to what that process is.
But could, but if we did that, would it be such that every capital project had to go to referendum then?
Well, depending on how you ask the question.
So we don't need to do a referendum to change the amount of an expenditure to make it possible that that situation or that, well, give me, help me out here, what am I looking for? You know, for that, like, the pool or whatever could go on a ballot?
Yeah. You, you would have to, as of right now, you cannot put a capital project on.
Right, right. I'm aware of that.
And, and, and the logic behind that, when the Home Rule Charter was written, was that, the thought was that you have seven people who are elected to represent the community who educate themselves by virtue of the fact that they participate heavily in the governance of this community, and so therefore, they are in a better position to make those kind of decisions than, than making it open to a referendum. So if you look, and the example I can give you is in the state of Ohio where all school questions are referendum questions, filling schools, they have a very difficult time in terms of doing capital projects for schools in, in Ohio because...
Everybody votes no.
Everybody votes no. And so the interest of the school district in Ohio may not be being served because people take a poor view of what's important.
Okay, so, but we could, I mean, if I got a group of people and went out there to form a referendum, do we have to, we didn't have to get our other one approved by you, so we could just...
I don't know the process, and I would have to go, if you wanna give me a call?
You know the process, Mr. Smith?
I don't, and I was just wondering, too, with those capital improvements, if our Home Rule Charter speaks to that, because it can't fasten it.
Yes, it does.
But that we could change it to every single vote would have to be by referendum? I don't know if you have the ability...
You could amend the Home Rule Charter, again, it depends on the question that's being asked on the Home Rule Charter. Not all questions can be asked by referendum either, so...
That was the question, I wanted to see.
Well, I was wondering if we could have a referendum addressing the amount, when something becomes a certain amount, you know?
You mean like we're intending to spend a lot of going wrong or something?
Yeah, so, yeah, so...
More than five million dollars?
Yeah, something like that or whatever, you know?
We'd have to think...
And if it's that, then it has to go to a vote of the people.
I'm sure it's complicated and I think there's probably a good reason why the Home Rule Charter says what it says because...
Well, I have people studying it, some attorneys and that, but they haven't given me an answer yet, and I just think, because that's, I'm not paying them, you know?
You can call tomorrow afternoon, I'll have the answer for you, because it really...
All right, I'll call you tomorrow afternoon. Okay, my third thing, and I have five seconds, but he...
There has to be some limitation on that, because if it was a critical...
Yeah, I thought, so I just...
Public function, like, you know, that the roads were deteriorating so bad because, you know, and we needed to spend eight million dollars to fix them all, and people were coming in saying, no, I mean, that, that just couldn't be the law.
Well, that's why it would be important that whatever the question was, that it be drafted carefully.
Yeah, even the bidding process that this council employs, if it's X dollars this year and you have to wait for it to get on the ballot and vote and come back around, surely it's most likely to increase.
Well, maybe we could put words in there about these, this is not a critical thing, you know what I mean? It's not life or death, or, you know, you're not gonna break your car in a pothole, stuff like that. Okay? All right.
Limitations, that's all...
Yeah, 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 sure. We, hey, we can get, make it real specific. All right. The other thing is, you know, listening to the two speakers on the transgender issue, rather than, you know, if you can't change the law or do some kind of regulation or whatever, can you put that somewhere that Peters Township is a welcoming community of all, you know, whatever? Can't you do that so that any businesses wanting to come into Peters Township at least would know that you all support that, we all support that, and that we don't discriminate?
I don't have your statements on this.
I would imagine it is.
Well, you might say race creed and all that, but what about sexual orientation and put all that new stuff in? Could you do that?
We can take a look at it. I mean, again, we can pass a resolution that effective, again, you know, it's a feel-good moment, but it doesn't have any...
I mean, don't make me do two referendums, okay? Don't make me do two. All right, okay, think about it. Put your thinking caps on, see if you can come up with something.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chaney. Anybody else?
Mike Cordger, 119 Leesview Drive. I'd like to talk a little bit about stormwater retention ponds. But first, I grew up in about four miles upstream from Turtle Creek, Pennsylvania, in nineteen fifties, before they had sanitary wastewater treatment. There was eight hundred homes in this plan, and it was on a hill and there were two valleys with pristine streams, except where the sewer job flow was. Sewer job flow on either side of the hill just ruined these streams, two sewer job flows, and it went into another stream and it ran down into Lynn Run, right through the center of Turtle Creek. In the summertime, you could hardly walk through that town because of the stench. You couldn't live near there. And then we started treating wastewater. And when you, and thank goodness for pollution control, you know, when you buy a home, you know you have to pay for wastewater treatment. It's automatic. That stream I was talking about has bass in it now. And if you look at our wastewater plant on Valley Brook Road, drive down Valley Brook Road, you'll see a blue heron every now and then fishing in there. All right. The same should hold true for stormwater retention ponds. Why should $400,000 up homes send water downstream to flood $50,000 homes in Carnegie and Monongahela? So now we have stormwater retention ponds, but I'm wondering why the township is spending $40,000 a year to clean these ponds out for the people who live there? Not only $40,000 a year, but it seems like there's a $4,500 cost overrun. Every year, this is gonna be happening and you're gonna have cost overruns because you find pipes broken or something like that? So council should find a way to assess these homes, put the money in a kitty, and every five years, or whenever you determine that that pond needs to be cleaned out, it's cleaned out, but the money is there and it's not township money. So with that being said, I'd like to talk about the swimming pool. Most of the people that afford a swimming pool say that they want a place for the kids to go and have a good time, which is great. But I'll bet there's at least 10% of the people in the township that can't afford pool baths. We're not as rich as it looks and a lot of people can't afford that. So you're going to have kids that cannot afford to go to the pool. And if you build a pool, I wish you would make a provision for these kids to get a pool bath, otherwise they're gonna be bullied to death by social media and everything. They're gonna be called poor, every name in the book. So just like they make a provision for school lunches for people that can't afford them, there should be a provision made for kids in the township who, whose parents can't afford a pool bath. But those same parents, once we start amortizing the capital cost, their taxes are gonna go up and they're gonna have to pay for the pool that their kids can't use. Now, talking about cost overruns, the pool's gonna cost 11 million dollars right now, but is that pool gonna, is that pool undermined, like Pleasant Valley School a mile away was? And it caved into the mine? So you gotta do a geotechnical survey? What if they come back to you and say, yeah, there's, it's undermined, you gotta spend another million dollars filling those holes up, filling the mines for concrete? So our 11 million's probably gonna be about 13 million dollars. Now let me mention something else. There is a state pension crisis in the state of Pennsylvania. It hasn't hit now, but the pension in Pennsylvania is terribly underfunded. Just about the time the state's gonna raise our taxes to cover these pensions, we're gonna start amortizing the cost of the pool. So we're gonna have the pool tax, we're gonna have the state pension tax increase, plus 10 other taxes somewhere. We're just gonna get taxed out of existence. So if we're gonna build this pool, it's gonna hurt a lot of people. Not me. I've done very well in life, but it's gonna hurt a lot of other people in the township. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else from the audience who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name's Caitlin Bell. I'm at 187 Marion Drive. I don't wanna be redundant, but I just wanna add my voice to supporting the task force for the nondiscrimination ordinance, if that would be something that we reach out and we can enforce here. We've found other areas that do have it. I want to refer to Julie, you know, I don't think all of these places would have these ordinances if they couldn't enforce them. I started the Gay Straight Alliance at the high school in 2015, and I want to express how much I know the importance of protecting the people in our community who are vulnerable. Peters Township may have your reputation for being one-way, but there are people in the LGBT community who live in Peters Township who face various forms of discrimination daily. I know of one family who lives over, near the rec center, and they're planning on moving out of Peters Township because of the various comments, bullying that their children receive for having two moms. And I just think that whatever we can do, even if it isn't, doesn't end up being an ordinance for whatever reason, we need to make some type of action in our community to let people know that people of the LGBT community are welcome in Peters Township. This isn't something that we need to wait and see on in, in any type of aspect. We need to be proactive about this and make sure people in the community are protected who are in the LGBT community, including our trans brothers and sisters and siblings because they do live here. I know them and I know that they've been discriminated against, and that's something I'm sure that if the task force was formed, I can provide many stories for you. So I just wanted to add my voice to that. I don't know if there's any questions, but, nope. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak on a non agenda item? Seeing no one will move on to unfinished business, of which there is none, so we'll move on to new business first is authorization to remove the Old Trails Playground.
Michelle? We established a playground in Old Trails Park. It was an open space that was given to the township in 1994 as part of that development. It is a small neighborhood park. That is the playground structure. Maybe Michelle can tell us a little bit more about its condition?
The structure's old. It's in need of some major repairs. First of all, sometimes it doesn't look as bad as it is because of the rubberized paint coatings and what's underneath, it gets rusted and corroded. Where those disc steps are, if, if we do keep the playground, that whole section's going to have to be removed, otherwise we're gonna have to put significant money into replacing those parts. And like I said, it's, it's in bad shape as far as structurally. It may not look as bad as it, as it is, but that's the reason why we're looking at, do we wanna fix it or do we want to remove it? Or I should say, replace it?
Were there any restrictions on us? Like, when they gave us the land, was it, were we obligated to do this?
No, the township chose to do that.
So, so we put it in and...
Yes.
And there's no, so we still keep the land?
Yes, the, the land is actually open space that was given us as part of the, of the development. As you can see, there's a parking lot that actually, back here, that opens up this space in between. There's also...
How do you get there?
Well, you either drive to this parking lot, there also is at least one access down off the road. I don't know whether there's a second one. Is there a second one in this direction as well?
Is that gonna use it? That you know?
There's, there's no, there's no reasonable evidence of regular use. The only thing that we see is maybe evidence of some nighttime visitors.
Michelle, is there a way in the Old Trails?
I don't know about that, okay.
So they don't really, no one in, has anyone in the, in the community discussed about it, or is it just anecdotal that you don't think there's issues?
I don't, well, I mean, we have trash cans and benches and areas down there. You just don't see anything getting used. You don't see evidence of people being down there.
Well, I believe that we authorize Park Act to remove the Old Trails Playground.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro say nay. 7-0 Ms. Lowers. Next out is requesting the Peters Township Basketball Association to waive rental fees for the purpose of hosting a summer basketball clinic.
So the basketball association has had a summer clinic for a number of years. In the past, this has been organized locally. This year, the basketball association has employed the services of Scoring Factory, which is a Pittsburgh-based business to provide...
is a Pittsburgh-based business to provide basketball instruction through camps as well as private sports academy. The question is, what is the appropriate fee that should be charged? So if you were a business coming in asking to use our facility for a camp, we would be charging you $445 per hour. If you were a resident business, we would be charging you $115 an hour. And the Park and Rec Department, on the basis of the fact that this was a request from a resident organization that has told us that only township residents will be participating in the camp, has determined that the $115 an hour rate is correct. The basketball association has approached the Park and Rec Board and asked that that fee be reduced or eliminated, and let the recommendation from the Park and Rec Board be that it be set at $65 an hour, which is the same rate we would be charging if you were having a private birthday party at the rec center. And the point of my discussion inside of the manager's report is that I don't think that we ought to be determining rates by exception. It should not be that the rate table changes based upon a request to council. That if our rates are inappropriate, whether it's for the WPIAL, the PIAA, or the basketball association, we ought to be changing the rate structure so that in fact, they can be easily administered, that someone can come into the Park and Rec Department and know what those rates are. So, you know, with that in mind, unless council's interested in changing that rate table, I think the determination by the Rec Department is actually correct. I think it's $115 an hour. And if that's inappropriate, we should seriously look at changing the rate table for everyone. I think there's people here with the basketball association.
So wait, so what would we really be charging as this scenario?
We're going to charge, what we're proposing is $115 an hour. What the Park and Rec Board has suggested is that the rate be $65 an hour.
So Park and Rec has recommended a change in the rate?
No, what they're recommending is that the fee be waived. They have not looked at the table to determine whether or not the rates are correct.
Boy, I thought they recommended we go to $65.
They're recommending that you waive the fee from the table and set it at 65. Yes, that's correct.
Good evening. Jim Malloy, on behalf of the Peters Township Basketball Association. And what we asked to the Parks and Rec Board was to consider this because as we look at this chart and this is, we are a township department, and when we run our normal, we've run this program for five or six years, we've never been charged for the gym fees. And in that time, we've used high school kids or our own coaches and things like that. So we always took it as that is our organization running the gym, our organization putting on the program for our kids. And then it was determined when we were using a company to help us, assist us as coaches, which we're compensating them, and we worked out a rate with them, that they went to the $115 for the resident nonprofit group. So our request to the Parks and Rec Board was to consider, you know, the circumstances because I don't think it is clearly covered by that chart in terms of, you know, we are the company there, we are the organization that's running the gym time, we are the organization that's running the program. As I understand, it's then interpreted by, because we're using someone else or paying them, it's a different rate, but it's still our program. And so the Parks and Rec Board recommended the 65.
Yeah, but someone, again, the issue is someone's making a profit when you bring someone in. They're not doing it free.
They're making a bigger profit than you.
Right.
They're getting 57% if we use of the revenue if you use $65 an hour. And you're getting 29%, which according to this little memo here is $6,630. Now, you know, and so they must be getting, they're making $12,000 or $13,000.
Yeah, yeah.
It should be the other way around. I mean, if you're bringing them in to organize this, then they should make this much and you should make that much, and I probably wouldn't have a problem with that. But you know, then, you know, other people are going to be coming in here doing the same thing.
Your contract with Scoring Factory states the plan amount per participant, I'm presuming is $100.
Correct.
So at the minimum, you have to spend $100, you have to charge $100. So what you're trying to negotiate is the fee for rental of the facility so that the township, what you're asking is the township take a loss of $2,400 against the $115 while you maintain a profit.
Well, no, because we, when we originally set it up, when we did that $100, we were just going to charge the $100 just to, you know, for that and not us not take any profit from it.
But you still have to pay a fee, so how would you pay the fee if you only charge?
Well, when we originally did it, we didn't know that we were going to have to pay the fee. So that, what ended up happening is just that when we originally put this out, we didn't know that we were going to have to pay the fee. We worked with Parks and Rec, and then when we did registration, we tried to estimate based on how many kids we have, what we'd need to cover that fee.
I'm sorry, I'm confused because it says that you set the fee at 175, and you already have 130 participants.
And just, it's been an evolution. So when we came to, when we set it, registration was going forward, and we had the first thing, the first time it was going to be the $115, is we tried to estimate how we have. Since then, registration has been completed, and we had the other meeting. So what we intend to do is, depending on the ruling, is adjust how we deal with it, you know, going forward with that fee. Because when we set the first time, we wanted to proceed with our program to run it now, which we usually typically run one towards the end of school and in early summer, and then at the end of the summer.
Are you going to only use half the gym?
We are only given half the gym, where the other half is left open for.
And how long does this program last? I don't know. It's longer than that.
So.
Two days a week?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks, two days a week, three hours per day.
And the facility is charged by the ALPS, so that's why we're talking about it.
Is that what it is? It's fine.
Yes, so we get charged.
I do agree with Mr. Lauer that we get these all the time. Ours is a special case, or, you know, we should be charged less because this, this, and that. So we are always changing. We have this in place to try to cover these issues, and we continue to make exceptions, then that charge has no meaning, right? But I'm going to make a motion that we accept the Park and Rec recommendation to, in this particular case, waive the rental fee and move it to $65. Keep things going. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose say nay.
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 Four three, Mr. Lauer?
I don't know.
I don't know. Let's do a roll call.
No, it's four three.
Four three for the motion.
Four for the motion?
No.
No.
Nay. Somebody voted nay down there. Who voted nay?
Can we verify with a roll call?
That's four three, the other, four three, the motion fails.
No, it doesn't. Yet it does.
Can we do a roll?
Can we do a roll call, please? Aye.
Mrs. Merrill?
Nay.
Mr. Steigl?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Nay.
Mr. Burquist?
Four.
Nay.
Mr. Ball?
Nay.
Mr. Lewis?
Nay.
Mr. Cozer?
Aye.
So it's three four. You kept saying it was four three.
Four three, yes. Oh, four three, one.
So the motion failed.
Motion failed, yes.
I'll make a motion that we charge, we authorize them to set $115 per hour as the fee for the Peters Township basketball camp.
Sure.
Motion and second. All those in favor, let's do a roll call this time.
Mrs. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Steigl?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Nay.
Mr. Burquist?
Aye.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Cozer?
Nay. So it's five two. Next item is awarding contract for the Peterswood Park Picnic Shelter Number Two replacement project.
As council will recall, last year, we attempted to bid this project, and the low bid greatly exceeded the amount that was budgeted. What we had suggested to council was that, we didn't think it was the nature of the project, but rather the process that was used amid the project. So earlier this year, you awarded a separate contract for the acquisition installation of the playground equipment. The second aspect to this project was the construction of a shelter and some site improvements. We solicited bids for this. The low bid was deep basketball construction at $169,864. Combined together, this will be $63,000 plus below the amount that's appropriated, and it's more than $200,000 lower than what was previously bid. So, you know, it's our recommendation that you award a contract to deep basketball construction.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose say nay.
Thank you.
Seven zero, Mr. Lauer.
Thank you for your hard work.
Next item is appointment of a member to the environmental quality board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Esther Rosenfelder to the environmental quality board for a term that will expire January 1, 2021.
I'll second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorization for the Peters Township Police Chief to execute on behalf of Peters Township a memorandum of understanding between the Peters Township Police Department and Peters Township School District.
The Pennsylvania Safe Schools Act requires that all Pennsylvania school districts and local law enforcement agencies enter into a memorandum of understanding that governs the way in which those two organizations interact. The state of Pennsylvania provides guidance with regard to what needs to be included in that memorandum of understanding, and that guidance goes as far as to say, if you deviate from this guidance, you have to be able to justify why that is. So the memorandum of understanding in front of you follows the model. It's also what was, in fact, in effect for the last two years. So it's my recommendation that council authorize the police chief to enter into the memorandum of understanding.
Has it been reviewed by the solicitor?
It has not.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the police chief to execute on behalf of the township a memorandum of understanding between the police department and the school district, subject to review and approval by the solicitor.
Okay. I'll second that. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment. I believe that the Peters Township School District has approved this. I looked at their minutes for March. So if in fact there is a change theoretically, we're not just sending it back. Is that true?
That'd be correct.
Thank you.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is special permit for yard signs in public areas to advertise the Peters Township Cannon McMillan Relay for Life event.
Yes, in your docket, you have a special permit that's been filed by Chad Spencer. He's a township president who's helping organize in 2019 Peters Township Cannon McMillan Relay for Life. What's being requested is the permission to put temporary signs at intersections, township-owned buildings and properties, and businesses along Route 19. And this must be Chad.
Yeah, and to specify, those would be businesses that obviously approve of it, same with township like the recreation center being able to approve of it, or the volunteer fire department.
How long would they be up?
They would be up until June 17.
From, well, that's not an answer, how long, unless you're.
From now until June 17, yes. I would probably start placing them tomorrow.
I think I've seen some already.
Yes. So we've been placing them at people's homes and businesses that, because the main concern is businesses along 19 have said that previously, whenever they've put up signs, they've been fined by Peters Township for it, and I wanted some kind of written formality to say that, or approved formality to show that they would not be fined for it.
Not for these signs, they haven't been fined. They have been fined when they're in violation of the signed ordinance with regard to placement of signs.
Flagging signs and advertising.
And sales.
So, Mr. Lauer, did you have some kind of suggestions or comment on that?
Well, you know, my only concern is that when I read the application for the special permit, unlike what council has done for other organizations, these signs could potentially be everywhere, and we haven't done that. I do think that, and I don't know whether you've approached us or not, but I can tell you banners across the trail.
Yes, we've applied for this.
There are also electronic message boards that I really think you should take advantage of, and I'm sure the fire department can help you with that electronic message boards. The school district also has electronic message boards, as well as a number of businesses. And I'm just thinking that that's perhaps a more appropriate way rather than signs everywhere. Certainly, we've had groups that have signs at intersections, and council's permitted that in the past.
So, Mr. Spencer, sometimes we're very sensitive about the signs that continue to stay there long now through the event. What would your plan be? Would you be out there collecting them?
I would personally be doing it along with members of my family and volunteers from our group. So the event is June 15th and 16th. The plan would be the next day to go and collect any signs that we have personally placed. Obviously, we're not going to take them from homeowners, but if we have placed them at intersections or at businesses, et cetera, that have approved it, then we would go and take them down.
I think that it's a worthwhile cause, so I'll make a motion that we approve Mr. Spencer's request for special sign permits, but encourage him to avail himself of the suggestions Mr. Lauer put forth about electronics so that the message is really much broader, more broadly spread.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
While I certainly support the effort that you're going through, you also have to recognize that I am not in favor of signs all over the township, so I will be voting no with the request.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose say nay.
Nay.
Four three, Mr. Lauer. Next item is special permit for a sidewalk sale for Century Sports Inc. for June 6 through June 9, 2019.
This is simply a sidewalk sale in front of Century Sports. We don't see that there's any problem.
So we issued a special permit for the sidewalk.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a contract to Toine Inc. under the CoStars program for the purchase of a fire truck.
At the previous meeting, we discussed about different methods of procurement. One of those that was offered as an alternative to a competitive bidding process was to purchase a demonstration fire truck through the CoStars program. There were identified that there were five different manufacturers who had demonstration trucks. The one from Toine actually meets pretty much the requirements of the fire company. This vehicle was brought to Peters Township. We had, the fire department had a chance to look at the truck, to find, you know, determine how it, whether or not it could meet their needs. They're convinced that with some modification, that it would in fact do that. The budget does not have an appropriation this year for a fire truck, so if we were to award this bid, we would, we would have to amend the budget prior to the fire truck arriving. I can say that we anticipated next year in the capital budget that we would, we would appropriate $525,000 for a fire truck. This truck will probably cost no more than $495,000 if we were to acquire it under the CoStars program. And with that in mind, it, you know, it'd be my recommendation that we take advantage of this and award a bid to Toine under the CoStars program for an amount not to exceed $495,000.
So moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Please. I know that many of us, maybe all of us, took an opportunity to come up and inspect the vehicles there. It's considerably smaller in wheelbase than anything that's been in this fleet. We had on display for Memorial Day Parade, how many vehicles?
Seven.
There were seven. I think I was surprised by.
The small ones were there, yeah.
I know you loaded hose on it, filled the tanks, and also understand, yeah, you better. Chief or chiefs?
So, yes, Mr. Lewis, we took advantage of what we were given. We were given the opportunity to see a truck before we buy it. Even when we get a custom piece apparatus built for us, we never get to see it before you actually commit to buying it. This one we did. We took advantage of it. We put, we filled the water tank with 750 gallons of water. We fit 1,300 feet of large supply line on it, and that's the bulk of where our weight comes from. comes from, is the water and the large supply line. With that weight down, the, the truck had considerable amount of power. It, it will without a doubt suit our needs.
It's not a Texas rear end or anything like that?
No, and actually, that's the question I asked you, Coyle, is, if this truck's built in the Midwest, it's flat. What does that do for us? So the first place that we took it was Pleasant Valleys Hill. And the fact that it accelerated up the entire hill shows me that it, it will well perform in our municipality.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a contract to AEC Group under the CoStars program for the purchase of computer hardware and software.
So the, the network, the computer network right now is designed around servers that are over eight years old and at the end of their useful life. In fact, to some extent, that, some of these devices are no longer supported, so therefore there are no longer software updates available. In the budget, there is an appropriation of $100,000 for the replacement of the township's existing server infrastructure. Under the CoStars program, we would be acquiring the servers at a cost of $78,564. The configuration of the network would be, being done under the terms of the existing service agreement with AEC, and we would estimate that that cost maybe about $5,000. So it's my recommendation to council award a contract to AEC under the CoStars program for the purchase of computer hardware and software in the amount of $78,564.
Second. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a deed transferring .011 acres from Center Presbyterian Church to Peers Township.
So this is again part of the project with the, with the realignment of Center Church and Rolling Hills Drive. There's a small portion of land that the church has been willing to donate to the township to facilitate that, and this, this is just authorizing the appropriate township official to sign the deed to be able to record that transfer.
So moved.
Sir.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorize the appropriate township officials to enter into a professional services contract with Geo Mechanics Inc. for geotechnical inspection services in relation to the construction of Rolling Hills Drive.
Geo Mechanics is the, is the engineering group that provided the engineering services to HRG for the design of the fill that will be supporting the Rolling Hills Drive. As that's constructed, they're the natural group to ascertain whether or not the design features are actually being followed and doing that testing. It's Mr. Zomitis's opinion that the rates that they're proposing to charge are in line with industry standards, and what, what I am recommending is that council authorize the appropriate township officials to enter into a professional services contract with Geo Mechanics in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
So moved. Second. The motion in the second. Any further discussion?
All right, we'll have to. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Zomitis, just a question. It's sort of logical to me that if they've done the initial design, they'll know what it is. Is it normal, what would happen if they found that they made a mistake? How does that work? I understand they'll be the project manager. What if something unforeseen comes up, you know, that they didn't design for, and then it needs to be adjusted? How, how does that handle when they're the people who made the mistake in the first place?
Not sure I'm quite following the question, but I guess in any project, there's field engineering, I mean, whether it's them inspecting it, the earthwork, or whether it's another firm. If there's an unforeseen condition, like we took a test bore in here and the conditions are different in the field at this location, we, we made a bad assumption. I mean, it, it would come up during the course of the construction. The contractor would bring it to our attention, number one, and we'd have to kind of all regroup and figure out another, you know, another scenario for this design.
Okay, so I can appreciate that. So on the secondary side of it, if they found a shortcut or something better to do that would reduce cost, we'd have an expectation that would also be shared?
That would, yeah.
One more time with more confidence.
I, I've never seen that happen.
Yeah. They're going to use all 40 thousand.
Typically doesn't go that way. Well, and if you read their proposal, and it has to be this way, you know, it depends on the weather and the conditions and how fast the contractor's moving. I mean, they have to be on site during, you know, critical earthwork operations, inspection of keyways, compaction, you know, stuff like that. So I asked them for a price, assuming eight weeks of full-time inspection. So if it's seven, we save. If it's nine, we'll have to come back to you if, if it's going to be over the $40,000. So I asked them for, hey, if it's an eight week, based on your, your T and M costs, what, what's the range? And they said 35 to 40, so.
Basically, I'm asking your comfort level with this arrangement?
Yeah, I, I think it's the only thing that makes sense, to be honest with you, because if it were another firm, from a risk management standpoint, I, I would have a problem with that, because you can imagine if there is a problem a year from now, the road fails and falls into the valley, and you've got a lot of finger pointing going on, it's a bad inspection or bad design. So it's, I think this is the logical choice.
Thank you for your explanation.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis.
You can continue.
Those, all opposed say nay.
I have to ruckus myself. I am involved in legal proceedings, involved in the party, so.
Six zero one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is payroll and bills.
Chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them in order.
Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is correspondence. Anything we need to discuss under correspondence?
You have a definitive letter from PennDOT saying that a barrier cannot be placed on West McCurry Road to stop left-hand turns in the CVS, so we're kind of stuck with what we got.
There are road spikes on the entrance.
Someone else suggested that tonight.
I was thinking it's like this.
You cannot put a physical barrier to stop left-hand turns into CVS.
I mean, the illegal ones are going into, I saw two of them the other day.
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, I had a hard time figuring out where this was. So that, it's the CVS right there.
It's the CVS.
Why don't they put one of those, you know, like, this way, come out that way? You can't do that either? Like in the driveway?
You can't. Yeah. It'd be CVS.
But we'd have to, it would be, yeah, and you would have to get, the bank actually owns that, P and T Bank actually owns that. You'd have to get their concurrence to do that. You cannot require them to do that.
Wasn't that a liability issue for them? If somebody, if they know, know that people were making illegal left-hand turns there and there's a big accident, aren't they going to be on?
Well, let's do this. Let's, let's ask whether or not they'd be willing to do that, but I don't think you could require them to do it. But we could ask them.
Next item is reports. Does any council member have any questions or comments with regard to the various reports?
Just a clarifying question about the Public Works are removing their thermal hills and taking it over to Bruni, which is good here, they're expanding that parking lot right outside the, between the soccer field and the football field. Are we going to pave that? Or what's the surface going to be?
It is paved.
It is paved. What they're hauling out there, there is a mountain of topsoil, and the school district was generous enough to allow us to use their topsoil to be able to, to restore that area around the new parking lot.
I haven't been over there. I just didn't have a chance to drive.
That's actually, it's a great project, designed in-house, completed by the Public Works Department in-house.
I actually, oh, by the other day, I, I had a concern with that. Is it going to be lined or anything?
Yes.
Okay. I think that would, that's, it seems like it's under, underdone. A lot could have been a little bit, I think you, if anything, you kind of level off the area between the, and the new lot, which would be seeded and guarantee people would be wanting to.
Probably.
All their kids.
Moving on miscellaneous.
I'm sorry, sir, may I?
I'm sorry.
The parking record report talks about two of the pros leaving, and we've been monitoring the viability of that program.
Two, two of the pros are leaving at kind of our request, because quite frankly, they're not putting in enough time to make it of value to us.
So do we?
We're in the process of replacing them.
Okay, so it'll still be in the whole room. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to miscellaneous. First item, glass recycling.
The, you know, we had the pop-up glass recycling event, which was very successful. This is the kind of container they use for that event. The whole idea behind the Pennsylvania Resource Council doing these pop-up events is to demonstrate in fact that there is a market and interest in recycling glass. It is not their desire to continue to do the pop-up events, because there, there's a problem in terms of staffing them, the cost of doing them, and what they're really after is to create drop-off centers for glass. And so towards that end, that container costs about $8,000 as it sits there. They have funding from private groups that will subsidize 50% of the cost. The question the Pennsylvania Resource Council had for Peers Township was, would you be willing to pay the other 50% of that, that we can take?
And then 350 bucks a month.
Well, 350, whatever it fills, and I don't know whether that's a month, or two months, or two weeks. I, you won't know that until.
How are we going to ensure that people from outside of the township aren't going to fill it up, and then it's going to cost the taxpayers money every month?
I don't think you can determine who deposits in there. I think when we used to have a drop-off center, the vast majority of that is going to be township presidents, but there's no guarantee that you want to have people outside of it.
At the pop-up, the majority were township. There were people from other communities, but I would agree, it would be probably similarly compact, cardboard compactor, because we don't really want to.
I don't, we don't know.
But we could schedule the haul outs once it's full. It would be like a standing.
Right. We, no, we, that's the way the cardboard compactor works.
And the location, Mr. Lauer?
What's that?
Location.
It would be my intention to place this opposite the cardboard compactor, because there's enough room there to be able to do it.
Excuse me for having been out, but the three products that go in the three bins are?
No, it's glass. It's the, that's the only thing that goes into this container is glass.
When they did the pop-up, they really didn't, they told us they, we didn't have to sort the glass, we didn't have to take lids off of jars, no labels, you could just pitch it in there. So this is, you don't even, according to what they've done in the past, you don't even sort it, you just put it in.
You just throw it all, yeah, and they sort it. They, they have the way to optically sort it wherever this is being processed.
What do they do with it once they get all the?
Well, you recycle glass by melting it.
Yeah.
You melt it again.
Yeah.
The clear glass goes over for Jim Beam bottles, I was told, and then the green goes for beer bottles and some kind of.
Why?
Do they get paid for that?
Well, the problem is right now that, that the, the market for all of the recycled materials is way down, so that's why you don't see these things paying for themselves anymore.
I think we should.
I'm in favor.
Well, I'll make a motion that we enter into an agreement with the company to split the cost of a drop-off container that we would put at the firehouse.
I'll second. Have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Six one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is 2019 bond issue.
We're progressing with the official statement for the bond issue and, and the various approvals that we need. I just want to make sure that I'm on the, on the right page with council. You know, this was the projected capital cost that we showed you, and it included an aquatics facility. If you take that aquatics facility out, we're still looking at borrowing, particularly since if we're going to finance the fire truck in here, about $9,400,000 just to be able to cover the cost of this project. What I'm suggesting is that we go out and float the bond at $10 million, and this, and if in fact we don't do the aquatic center, that additional money, I'm proposing that we would hold that and use it as matching money in pursuit of grants to do other aspects of the park, rather than put ourselves in a position where if we borrow less and you decide to go ahead with aquatics facility, we're going to be short, so. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I don't.
I have one other miscellaneous item for you. This just recently came in. As you're aware, from the township tour, there is, sanitary authority intends to replace the, this line that comes through here. What they'd like to be able to do is close down Oakwood Drive for?
June 8th to June 30th.
Oh, there you go. I guess if I would have read it a month.
June 8th, June 30th.